So we'll start by doing who is present. Alright, so Catherine's not here. And Sarah isn't here. Elaine?
Present. Breslow, present.
I'm here, Brooke Jewell. Alex Vitary?
Here.
Hi. Megan Brinsey is not here. Megan James?
Here.
Carolyn Coffey?
Here.
And Bronwyn Nelson?
Here.
Okay.
It's the first time. It's the first time.
Steven Brown. Are you here?
I am here. Oh, sorry, present. But mentally absent.
When I was reading, I just realized I'm reading off the notes from last time of who was actually here. And Mary, so Mary Lilly is also not here. It's against your people today.
So we do not have a form?
How many do we need?
I'm just gonna say.
One, two, three, four, five. Yes, we do.
Sorry.
By the way, just to show everybody relaxes, I took a look at the statistics of people that watch this. I know it was eight or nine.
They're not even eight.
There are even.
You don't know over the year.
Oh, over the year?
This is September.
Over a 12-month period?
Yes.
12 people. It's probably you. Let me see what that is.
Let me see how it's sound. Let me see how it looks. Oh, God.
Okay, so do we start with the director's report?
Minutes.
The minutes.
Approve the minutes.
Okay. Let's approve the minutes.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Actually, I can't make the motion because I wasn't at the last meeting.
I did.
Right. Go ahead.
I will make the motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Great, and now we'll go to the director's report.
Director's report. So we have a lot going on, a lot of accomplishments, which is great. So we have a new railing up front that I think looks really nice. And I think it's a welcome, nice, welcome to our community members that were having trouble using those stairs and they can now access the box. I don't think it's super noticeable either. I think it's pretty covert, which is great. We have our new roof coming in that was approved by Capitol, excuse me, Community Preservation Committee last year. And they're gonna be starting construction over our storeroom in October, which means that we get to start using our storeroom hopefully this winter. We haven't been able to use that space because it leaks so much. The amount of times we've had to replace the ceiling tiles has been quite a bit. And it doesn't keep heat or cool or any of those things. So it's been a staff workspace pretty much since COVID. And we haven't been able to reopen it. So we're excited to be able to use that space again.
Do we see that from the outside or about, is it kind of flat or?
Yeah, it's kind of a flat, which is why we have problems with it. And I don't, and you can correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I don't think it was the original slate either. I think that's been replaced.
Oh, okay.
So it's just a regular, I think they found something that looks like slate, but I don't think slate's going there because I don't think there was slate there to begin with. Can't really see that area.
I remember Jim Sandello and I walked up on it three or four years ago. And it looks horrible because of the patchwork. People have been trying to fix it piecemeal.
So that'll be a welcomed change. We are working on, we have glass ordered for our parking lot entrance window and we have a staff rent window that's also broken. And the parking lot entrance window almost looked like a car kicked a stone. It's a very perfect, like, stone mark and a spray from that. So I don't know if it happened all at once or it got a small crack and then started to spray after that. But that's unfortunately duct taped right now, but that's what it needs to be for safety. So we're hoping to get that fixed very soon because it looks horrible.
You gotta stop.
Another incident that we had that was unfortunate is we had a car in the parking lot go forward instead of backwards. And it took out one of our light posts in the back of the parking lot. Everybody was fine, which is the important part. But we do, we are working on replacing that light post because we already have a fairly dark parking lot to begin with. So we'll get that done pretty soon. And the last exciting news is Recreation Department has relocated their evening dance program to downstairs in their space. It was creating quite a traffic issue in our top parking lot just because of its, you know, success. And it was also a little bit noisy in the evening with the kids doing hip hop right next to the children's room. So we worked with them for a little while and they found an opportunity to move it and they took it. So we appreciate that. Coming up next month, Circulation Supervisor Michael Roderick is going to be joining us at our trustees meeting. And he's going to be discussing his data-driven changes regarding his collection, the collection layout. So he has gone through very aggressively and looked at our circulation stats for each of our collections versus how much space it takes up. And for example, our paperback collection right now is taking up very small space, but it circulates quite a bit. And so the idea is we need to expand some of these collections that are really moving and maybe take away some space from collections that are maybe not as popular as they were 20 years ago. So he has done a phenomenal job of running data, but also creating color-coded stack renderings of each collection has a color and those colors get placed around the building in the layout that we have now. So he's done a really phenomenal job and he'd like to present that to the board next month.
Great.
We are also very excited to have Jen Evans to start with us. She started on Monday. She's hit the ground running. She has a lot of training to do on software applications that we use that are unique to the library. So she's been working on that most of the week. She's been working with Kristen on thinking, brainstorming, new programming. Our programming's planning is done for September, October, November. Our newsletter went out. So she will start to help programs December, January, and February. So this is kind of a nice leeway so that she can start planning and she doesn't have to rush too much to get something into the next calendar. Monday evening, I was at the Community Preservation Committee meeting. They approved about $8,000 for cabinets for this room so that we can add the cabinet on either side. Bronwyn and I very diligently. Did some measuring to make sure that they would fit. We did find that we were gonna have to shift the cabinet down a little bit so that we can get the full-size one on either side. But we're willing to do that because I think it's gonna accommodate quite a few more documents. And it won't block the window that nice because there'll be some space. Appropriate behavior policy. They did reorganize this and changed it quite a bit. And I just think it flows and is so much easier to attack.
I have a comment.
That's okay.
I mean, it's a couple copies if anybody needs to.
Oh, you have a copy. Okay, that'll be easier than me trying to forget my glasses again. Anybody else see? The colon and what follows are things you shouldn't be doing here.
Right.
So the very, one of the very first things, because it's alphabetical, is breastfeeding. Aggressing is prohibited. So to me, that was kind of an odd thing to have and certainly where it is. So there was something else I thought that was also positive, what you're allowed to do. Maybe the food and drink.
Yeah.
So I would almost suggest grouping those two together just because the colon is telling you what you can't, what you shouldn't be doing here.
So maybe if I reword the colon sentence to reflect.
Actually, you have some colons and some periods, just to clean it up.
Oh, after the items.
What about, since we're working this up for discussion, what about putting the most positive?
Decisions by committee are always a marvelous thing, aren't they?
What about putting the most positive things first?
We could do that. I was just trying to make it, the point was to make it tangible, but I understand what you're saying. And so I'm wondering if I change this for the Conference of Youth Patrons Volunteer Staff and the Protection of Library Property. The following outline, or the following.
Guidelines.
Guidelines.
Should be followed.
Should be.
Yeah.
And that will kind of clean up the positives and the negatives?
Yeah.
The following guidelines are expected, are requested, or?
Should be followed. Should.
Should be followed, yeah. Should be followed. And then it would just be, oh, it'd still be a colon because it's a colon. Okay.
Then you gotta fix that second, the next sentence.
Engaging in any?
Is prohibited. You just need to add, is prohibited, prohibited.
Okay. Oops. Is there any other?
That was.
Okay, that's a good one. Hit that.
Are there any positive, I mean?
Nobody's gonna read these anyway, Steve. I got caught up with ideas too and then I'm like, what am I thinking? Is this really meant to be a tool in case someone doesn't behave correctly? To be able to say, we have a policy. It's not like anybody's gonna be, you know, looking around for what the, what they.
We're not gonna give them away with a lollipop at the store.
Exactly.
Well, and they're just gonna be looking at too, like, the topic that they might be offenders of or not offenders of, or they wanna see if somebody else is an offender.
And only, only after somebody has said, please put yourself on the way.
Yes, right. They wanna be like, oh, is that part of their policy? Yeah, whatever.
Exactly.
We can vote on it next meeting if that makes everybody more comfortable. I know we keep doing that, but I don't think, this isn't really an emergency. I'd rather just get it right and have it stay or.
And then fine.
Let's just do it. We accept the appropriate behavior policy as amended.
Second.
Third.
Motion to approve?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, next exciting thing that we have going on is we have a, what we've been calling a dress rehearsal of our website. So the way that this works is that it's almost like, it's not an active website right now. All of our tabs are blank. It's kind of a, it's an outfit being presented that's gonna fit onto our website. So it's just an outline we have now. I'm just interested to, it's absolutely editable. We can make changes if we'd like. And I just wanted to hear a little bit about what people's thoughts might be regarding placement, colors, anything. Obviously, the content's not all there yet. It's just still an outline. When it says third-party widgets, that's gonna be our calendar. And so it's gonna be either the day of or the week, whatever we decide looks nice in that space or makes a nice layout. We chose to put our hottest topics based on our, our statistics from our website more prominent on the, on the site, which is the buttons. We wanted to create a space for our databases because nobody knows that we have them. And I think we were hoping to give them a more of a front page look. This is a little confusing at the bottom, so I wanted to explain. The company who designed this said to me, it's an extra charge to add social medias after you publish the website with them. So what she said to me was, give us all the social medias you might possibly have or any of the library applications, and then when you go to publish this site, you can hide them. So I only foresee six or four of these actually showing up when we have it. But should we, you know, decide at some point we wanna ditch Instagram and we wanna do more with our Goodreads, we won't have to pay extra. It'll just be in place for us. So you're seeing a lot of things there that are gonna be hidden once we publish.
But is Hoopla a social media website? Isn't that a database?
No, and so that's another thing. So like me too. Libby and Hoopla and Canopy, MeScan is for like just scanning items. So another conversation we had is our social media is not very strong. It's not our strong suit. So what we're hoping to do is start with having this say, keep it saying, stay connected, get rid of the follow us and just have Canopy, Hoopla, and just highlight the things that we're good at, which is our e-materials right now. And then this gives us the flexibility that if we decide we wanna switch from highlighting our e-materials to highlighting our social media, we have the flexibility to do that. So this looks really concrete right now, but it's really just providing us flexibility. So we'll hide some things and then bring some things out as we get better in social media.
Is it possible, go ahead.
No, go ahead. You go.
Is it possible to have kind of a topic of the month where you ask for feedback from?
Sure.
And have that prominent? And that would be a way to kind of stay in touch?
Yeah, I like that. I think that could live on one of these. I also have an idea where this gray box becomes half and maybe there's also a resource of the month or two resources of the month. Because we don't unfortunately do a great job right now in highlighting some of the really cool LinkedIn Learning, Ancestry, some of these things that we offer.
I do like that language, available every hour, every day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much? When you tell these folks that you like this, how easy will it be to change it at some future date?
So it's easy for them. What we need to do on our side is clean up what we have a little bit. So it's, for them, it's flipping a switch. They just take off what we had now and kind of dress our site differently. But we have some cleaning up to do underneath our tabs here. So essentially what will happen is all these tabs that we have at the top now will just match the ones that we have and they'll input all the content that we currently have. We need to clean up that content a little bit. There's some flow issues that we have just from over the years, learning how CivitPlus works. So on our end, we have some work to do on their end because it's nothing.
And I know it's just like a dress rehearsal website, but I think last time we talked about the pictures, like being really engaging. I don't know if you, with people, it's tricky, right? Because you need permission, but.
We can still do that. And they're, so I have the ability to change these out once this becomes solidified and it's our website. We can change out these pictures whenever we want. So they're, these aren't, we're not stuck with them. Yeah, so Jason Comporti took these pictures for us when he was doing the town hall website. I asked him to do some of the library just because.
Oh, that's a nice picture.
That's really pretty.
So we have some nice shots that he's done. And these are just the two that the company.
But there's no people, I mean.
There's no people.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. But there certainly could be.
It's just getting like a photo release kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So sometimes it's hard when we have a children's program and there's 100 people there and we're trying to get back some heads.
You know, if you just had a few kids at the table.
I think we need to stage it.
Yeah, I'd say. Maybe amongst your staff and us and some of the friends, like we could just gather one day in the library and be like.
And you can like tap four people in the children's room and say, can you just sit right there? Like, you'll have a steady picture.
Yeah, yeah. For our kids, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Little James boys.
Grandkids would be nice.
Get those grandkids.
Exactly.
So on the, sorry, we could also use like the event, like you know, you could have a touch truck that we could, we could shoot and we could post signage of, it says, we'll be taking photography. You know, I don't know, I guess we actually just have it, it's not really, but it feels like you'd wanna do some commute, some real, besides just the staging stuff, which I think is fine. You probably wanna do some real larger community type event type stuff that we could shoot.
So Ted actually gets rented, or not rented, but he's borrowed a drone from somebody. So he's gonna fly the drone over.
And you don't have anybody specifically.
Right, over the touch truck event, which is what I mean.
That'd be very cool.
So that'll be a good one.
So this carousel at the top here, you, is it limited to four or can it be as many as you want it to be? Cool. And then the other thing is, so it just, it just needs to be a JPEG. So you eventually could create something with words in it. If you had like an event that you wanted to do call to action on, you could create that so you wouldn't have to just be limited to that small headline right below it.
Yes, and we can also get rid of this headline too so that it comes down, which it needs to do.
Cool. Cause at some point you're gonna wanna have to be like, it's gonna be something that you're gonna have language about in the headline with the call to action. And then just on the bottom, so the other thing, so the catalog search is on the top nav as opposed to in the middle like button? You see what I'm saying?
It's here, yes.
That catalog search is opposed to being down here, right? And then that.
Down, oh, and like in a button?
Yeah, in a button.
I think.
Do people do that? I mean, I assume.
Are you limited to six buttons?
No. No.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, it just feels like I would wanna know if my books.
It kind of gets lost up there.
Yes.
Okay.
And is the catalog search actually a live search of what's actually in, available?
The OCLN.
Yes.
It's the OCLN catalog.
Okay, so you know when it's, when it's checked in and not in inventory and not in.
Right, oh, yes.
Yeah, cool. Right, that's awesome. I think it should be, it feels like it should be a button.
I agree.
Okay. It's funny that you brought this up because this was the biggest debate amongst the staff was the catalog search.
What was their thoughts on having it up there?
Well, I think the biggest one is on our current website, there's a toggle between like search this website or search the catalog. And it's not super clear. And I think a lot of times people try to do vice versa and things that are probably like, they think they're searching the catalog when the website stuff comes out. So there was a definite that we wanted to call out both of those things. Like we didn't want the catalog and the search, the website to be the same space. There is actually a wish to just have the magnifying glass and not have the words site search and just have it be like a small icon, but apparently that's not compliant. So we couldn't do that.
What does that mean, compliant?
Like ADA compliant. So you have to have certain things on your website, certain colors and things like that to make it ADA.
So I think the more you can make that catalog search stand out, the fewer times someone like me is just gonna type in ocln.org and go directly there and not go.
Not go to the website.
To the website.
Okay.
So that was gonna be one of my next questions, which was, do you want those buttons to be in this particular order? Or do we want it to be like, like where you would think the catalog search would be some, one of the most popular things that people are looking for, maybe, maybe not? Or is it gonna be like the Gap where you have to buy jeans, you have to go through the whole store and you gotta go to the back of the store to get jeans because they want you to buy other things along the way? So do we want the catalog button to be first? Do you want it at the end? Do you want it in the middle? Like just in terms of logical use of popularity of how most visitors view the website?
Just to see what our hits are. I guess I didn't consider this. How many hits we get on OCLN under Cohasset? So the OCLN, like we have a, if you go on ocln.org and you select that you're using the Cohasset library, there's a URL that comes up with that. It's like slash Cohasset.
And that's what I say. I save the OCLN.
Yeah.
In your bookmarks?
In your bookmarks. Oh, okay, yeah. So I'm wondering how many hits that piece gets.
If you just track this stuff so that we don't have to guess, then you'll have all that data and you can track it.
Right.
And as long as it's flexible, you know, you can try it up there and then put it down there and.
That's right. So I can, I can move things around, so we can do that.
Sorry, just two thoughts as everyone's talking here. I think you might wanna double expose the catalog search. One, in that bar on the homepage, you might wanna have it up in the main nav because once you navigate out of this and you go to the events page, you don't have this bar of stuff. So you might wanna have it double exposed. And I know that you guys wanna be graded out and put it in upper and lowercase, but I think I would still grade it out, but I would also put it in all caps. And you can remind me if you want with it. But I feel like.
Highlight it.
You wanna highlight it a bit more. But I think, I think, I'm going back to my original, my, what I originally said. I think you probably wanna be double exposed because you don't, you always wanna have availability to that, visibility to that, right?
Yeah.
I don't know. You tell me.
I just think it should be very visible there because I think.
At all times, right? Even if all of a sudden you go to read a story about kids and teens or events, you still wanna be able to navigate back to, you might wanna see what's available in the catalog.
What happens when you say go into kids and teens? And then is it possible with one click to see the entire menu structure?
So I don't know if I have any. So if we went to an interior page.
Right.
Then this would all stay at the top.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point.
But the bar goes, that other bar when it goes away. So that's why.
Oh, the buttons below, I see what you're saying.
The buttons below went away. So that's why you want, you wanna keep it in the top nav.
Oh, no, they're there.
Oh, they're still there? Oh, but they're below the phone. Either way, whatever you guys say, I don't. You look at the data and I'll advise you as to whether or not it's, it demands having it in the top nav or not. I assume that would go away in the interior pages. But that's cool.
How many random communications does the library get from citizens that aren't directly towards, can I have this book or get, get any of these things? Where they either make suggestions or ask questions, general questions?
So the number one questions that we get are these buttons down here. So I'd like to reserve a meeting room, how do I print, how do I get museum pass? You have eBooks? You know, they wanna read a magazine online and then that's just self-serving, you know, to publish our newsletter.
Which is excellent.
Yes.
So and the rest of all the calls are, can you put a hold on for me? Can, you know, that type of stuff.
But just, so suggestions, could you offer this service? Does that ever come, how does that get through?
Contact us. What happens when you hit contact us? What do you, what do you want to?
So this is gonna have like a, let's see if it'll go. It won't. So the CivitPlus software does a, like a staff directory that we can put together with pictures of each staff member and their contact and all that.
I know you guys didn't want that for years. Is the feeling different now?
Well, no, it's not. But you know, this is a, it's gonna be unpopular, but it's, this is a community building. We're promoting community. We're out in the public every single day. And I don't, you know, if somebody wants to use like a, what is it, an avatar? Like a cartoon version of themselves instead, I'm open to that. But you know, there are things when you're a public entity that is expected. And this is, this is one of them.
So as a female, you don't want your picture?
No, no, I didn't say I.
No, no, no.
I had heard or my, my election press, but. Cause I had once thought next to, you know, the staff's names of these, there should be like an email. You know, if you wanted a particular staff member to, I don't know.
Yeah, no, there's, there's still feelings of discomfort in that.
Yeah, I, you know, I think about that though on like lots of corporate websites and LinkedIn, like it's kind of standard now.
We're not a private sector either. It's part of the job and we're public facing. So if you don't want to be public facing or respectful, it's probably not your path, you know? Because we, we need to interact with people all, all day.
So the safety issue or is it, is it, I don't like my picture taken issue?
There's some of that too, which is why we welcome an avatar or something of that nature. You know, feeling uncomfortable about whatever. But there's, there's safety too. Like for example, a lot of libraries won't have like the staff members' first and last name. They'll just have the first name on their, on their name badge. They'll just have the first name on their, on their name badge. Um, unfortunately, public libraries are, there's a, there's a, when you're working out on the floor and you're chatting with people, there are people that misunderstand your presence on the floor as being their friend rather than somebody who's a, a public sector worker who's assisting you with something. And so unfortunately, people start to perceive that you're friends with them and they wanna hang out with you for the day or they wanna walk you to your car, or they wanna know what your schedule is, and so there, there's a line that easily gets crossed in public libraries and it actually happens quite often, so there's a, there's a fear of that, um, happening.
So, I, so I think there should be consistency, whatever, whatever you choose, whether you wanna do it avatar, whether you wanna do it actually a, a real picture.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it should look the same, so that people look, it doesn't look, some people just did selfies from their different cameras. Uh, so it should, it should look the same. So I was gonna suggest if it was a, I don't want my picture taken thing, we can actually do have hair and makeup done, I'm sure, and like have a headshot day or whatever, which would be fine. Or if it's because of a safety issue, well, then that's a whole different thing, and you probably need to, you probably need to consider it. Maybe it's only first names and it's.
Yeah, but I don't know. I don't know if I, it's a safety issue, you hear every day too, whether your picture's on the website or not, things just come on in too, right? So I, I empathize, but I don't.
You can't really do first names anyway, since all the, uh, it's, you know, B. Nelson at OCLN, or like, kinda gives it away. If you're gonna email someone, you know.
You'll never guess the last name. I think, you know, for CIRC staff, you know, I think it could just be Michael representing the circulation staff. I don't know if we need pictures of every single one of the CIRC staffs, maybe it's just department heads. I think it's all things I would need to negotiate, you know, with everybody and just, I don't wanna make people feel uncomfortable, but we also need to have a, a presence, so.
I wonder how they do it in schools now. They'll have like the same theme avatar, so like a bit emoji, you know, it's just like, so it's like a cartoon. It's not too cartoony, but it kinda looks similar to the person, and, but it's all the same.
Right, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
So.
That might be an option.
That's an option.
And then people can design themselves.
Design themselves, yeah. But it's not like two, you know, it's not like a unicorn and then more stuffy and then a.
No, no, it's them, it's like, it's them, but it's like a, they create a cartoon version of themselves. Yeah.
Bit emoji.
Bit emoji is like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's like the uniform.
If, I wanted to bring up a different topic, somebody.
You are based on the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we hang out? Can I walk into the car? Okay, back on topic. For example, if I wanted to suggest that the library add, um, Up-to-Date, which is a news source for medical information. How would I do that? Obviously, I could come in and talk to someone and make the suggestion. Is there a way I could do it from home if I'm only using the library remotely?
Yeah, so in one of these, and I can't tell you which one, let me see, I'll go on our current website and I'll find it. There's a suggestion link. Which will.
Uh, sure.
Go flip on to the other one. I should know which, where it's on, but I don't. Recommend, oh, no, that's our recommendations.
I mean, others would know far more about this than I would. It just seems like we wanna.
Suggest a title.
There's suggest a program and suggest a title. There's not a suggested database, but.
Or how about just suggestions?
We could just do suggestions, yeah. We could just read.
I, I mean, maybe nobody will use it and then it's a ridiculous suggestion, but it just seems like we wanna.
Well, it'll get rid of a, we have a lot of stuff here.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the things we need to work on is organizing our stuff.
Condensing.
Yeah, so that's a great idea to kind of start to put some of these things together.
How much of a totally external audience do we have that only interacts with us through our website?
I wouldn't be able to say. I don't know how many people.
Would you give, give a guess?
I, I don't even have a guess. I don't.
It's interesting, cause in other organizations, we're running into a problem now where people, for whatever reason, are truly external and we've gotta now have a few extra programs.
Just, just for the external.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may, again, it may be four people.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. So I know we had thirty-six thousand ebooks go out, or e-materials, but I can't make a call of whether those people just do ebooks or not. Um, and don't hold on to people's records either, so I wouldn't even be able to look back into people's, so I don't even know how I would track that.
Are we married to these colors? Is, like, how, how did this come about?
Uh, so we worked on them as a, as a team, um. So we're not a hundred percent married, but we're, we're pretty, we like them.
It looks nice, so I like it.
I just, I feel like some of it has, is very piecy, like it, the flow, like, that background is one thing.
Yeah.
Then the next background by the green, and then I'm not sure why there's green, and then this, the bottom stay connected is more keeping with the colors on top.
Mm-hmm.
So I just, I, I wasn't sure where the.
So you don't like the green, maybe specifically?
I mean, it, it makes things pop, that's the question, and that's what we want. I just.
Um, so I will show you our, I'll show you this. So we came up with. So this is our Canva account, where we make all of our things, and then we have our own brand template. So we have, uh, this is where all of our different types of logos live that we might use, and these are the brand colors that we've been using. Um, so I think that's, these are the colors that we gave to the company, and so that's, that's where it came from, um. It could certainly be, you know, we could use a lighter green, we could use something else, and.
Yeah, I like the orange. I think it kinda pops.
Okay, yeah. I agree with that.
But is it, I, I, I mean, it's, it's all.
It's not our.
It's all subjective. I mean, it's, it's all like, so.
I know, that stood out to me a little bit. I was like, oh, that's interesting. Cause I'd treated the green anywhere else, so it did like strike me when I first saw it, it's like, it didn't, it didn't like match the other things. Or even if it was like that.
Right, nothing has to be matchy-matchy, but it should be.
That's green, I think.
That's a compliment.
No, that's the same green.
That orange is muted green.
No.
It's absolutely green.
Well, I mean, it's not that, it's not like a.
Is it the dress gold or is it the dress?
It's in the same family.
Guys, we can't design this by committee, but.
That's right. So anyway, my, my point is slightly is, is just that, like, whatever you guys are, are designing, and you guys can agree upon it, it's, it's probably fine. I'm more concerned about the functionality.
Yes.
And I think that, you know, you gotta make sure that you're serving the traffic the way it's coming in, it's coming in. And then, you know, I think there are some certain, like, I looked at the, just that form that you had up a second ago.
Yes.
That one requires you put both an email and a phone.
Yes.
Which would, you probably don't need both, and you probably just wanna say preferred method of contact, and then they can, they can choose either phone or, or email.
Yeah.
Um, I know people are weird about phones.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah. I agree with you.
Yeah, so I think there's just, there's just, uh, just think about like, when, as you're trying to, depending what your objectives are, if it's about lead generation or about feedback or whatever.
Yeah.
Make people contact, have the ability to contact you or provide feedback either anonymously or with, I mean, I like the idea of getting a, a, capturing it, but some sort of communication, but.
Sure, cause someone can reach out to them. Oh, I saw, you know, we can personalize it, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, but I think, I think you should allow them to choose one or the other. That one had, had a star, asterisk next to both of them.
Yeah.
Which is, so they can be both a required field, so I think that might just be a little bit much. Um, but yeah, I mean.
And I don't even know, so that form too is like Civic Plus's form. I don't know how much I like it either, so anyways, but yes, all those things need to be cleaned up.
It did, it did look like it was your form, right? It was a different, it's, it's taking you to a different experience?
No, it's sort of Civic Plus, it's a clunky.
Oh, it's their form?
Yes, their form, so, and it's a clunky thing, so.
And it can't be re.
No, it certainly can't be, yeah.
So then.
Those are all things, we need to go through like page by page, see if it's ever used, first of all, um, put their Google on it, we'll let it see if their, that page is clicked on. And second of all, you know, clean off, because they're just, we've got some clunky stuff for sure.
Uh, yeah, and then you're gonna just focus on, as you go on different pages, focus on different headlines. You can't, and voice, at some, at some point, you're gonna have to focus on copy and voice, headlines and intros.
Yes.
It looks good.
Yeah, if I like this.
That picture is inviting, and you see a couple people.
There's a few people, yeah. But yeah, okay, good. All right, well, thank you, and I wrote a few things down, and I don't know on this thing, so. Everything okay? Touch a truck? Touch a truck. Um, so, just reminding you that the Community Services team is doing a truck, touch a truck event. We're gonna start marketing it next week. We just created the form for vendors, which is on this, um, site, so do you know anybody who would wanna partake? Um, the Paw Patrol will be there, so if you have any fans of Paw Patrol at your house, um, they will be there, I know I do, um, and it'll be super fun. Um, projects coming down the pike, um, we are investigating some technology for the study rooms. We'll be ready to talk to the board about that in the next couple months. Um, I think we've really solidified what we want. It's just, um, pricing it out and funding and all that kind of thing. I think it's gonna fit fine in our technology budget, but I just wanna make sure we have a plan for the year before we spend a, a large amount of money in the beginning of the year. Um, we're still looking at library usage by time, um, I think, um, and I can present this to the board. And the data that I have found is that it would be useful to open a little bit earlier. Um, the small bump in the road is that we need to negotiate that with the union staff, because of the change in work conditions. So that won't happen until twenty twenty-five is the next one?
So if you, if you opened an hour earlier, would you expand the number of hours open? Or would you try and, um, close earlier on a couple of days to, um, keep hours the same?
So what, I, I'm trying to keep hours the same, even though I know the three hours would bring us to the next tier, so that we could spend less money on materials. Um, so what I'm thinking now is I would like to open at nine and close at seven. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then on Thursday, Friday, I'd actually like to open at nine and close at six instead of five. So Fridays are one of our busiest days, because hangouts close. And also, it's the beginning of the weekend, so five o'clock closure on Friday is, people are mad dashing in to get what they need for the weekend, if they're going away or whatever it is. And I think just bumping that an extra hour to allow people to have some space to come in would be a good thing. Thursday nights are absolutely dead, and it was true in my previous community, and it's true here, and I don't, I don't know why. Um, but it's, all librarians talk about it, Thursday nights are just not even worth being.
Cause some retail stores are open late that night.
And nobody's ever really come up with a good reason why Thursday nights are so slow, but they're terribly slow, and so I think we could just treat them like Fridays, um.
Is there any way of coming up with something from the, from the union standpoint of providing, um, additional benefits that would offset the fact that you were asking them to work longer, either more ability to take off, time off at a certain time, or more flexibility?
Um, so I think what would, the topic that would need to be discussed is that the staff receive a ten percent differential after five o'clock. So if I'm cutting hours after five o'clock, they're missing that differential, so I think that would need to be.
Okay.
Would be the, the point that needs to be talked about. At least that's what I anticipate. I'm gonna let Bronn talk about passports. Um, the next project I'm starting to do some research on is have, look into having a marketing intern from the VOTAC School. As I go to meetings for the library and I go to meetings for Community Services, the hottest topic is always, we do these awesome things, and then we cross it off the list and we don't share enough of all these awesome things that we're doing, and it's across the board, and everyone's saying, you know, the bandwidth after you've done the thing to then brag about the thing that you've done is not there, and everybody's moving on to the next thing because everybody's just trying to get their list done, um, and we're doing ourselves a disservice. Also, some of us just don't know really how to market ourselves and what to say and what's the content, so they might know how to post something, they don't know what to say or how to tag or what photos would be appropriate, all those types of things. Um, so I wanna look into this avenue to see if it's something that could, you know, start with the library. Maybe it's just our library Instagram page, and this VOTAC student can help us just with that, and, but then we can get a rhythm, we can understand how we need to keep up with it. And then, you know, maybe it's something else after that, but, um.
I think that's a great idea.
Something that we're always talking about in every meeting with every different group is, how can we do this better? Um, so hopefully, we can start to do that better. And then I'm gonna let Bronn talk about welcome bags too.
Oh, okay. Right now, or are you done?
Oh, okay.
Let me just quickly run through the bills. Uh, as you probably can see, there's nothing too exciting going on. We do have Michael's education reimbursement. He's in his last year of library school. That is a contractual benefit, so, um, he handed in all the correct paperwork and, um, he'll get, he'll get some reimbursement for that, which is a great, uh, benefit. Um, and there was something else. Oh, and the other thing is our, um, technology is Comcast, and it's a little bit large right now, but, um, so the town switched over our phones, um, from Verizon to Comcast, and they already, we already have the internet through Comcast, so we were always paying for the internet. This next, in, couple invoices, we're paying for the phones as well, but from what we understand from Ron, the head of IT, is that eventually they're gonna take over paying for everything. So our bills will go down substantially, so.
So what he's basically said to us is, you know, if you can, if you could just deal with this for the next couple of months, I'm gonna take away all of your internet costs.
Cause I reached out to him and I said, we didn't budget for this extra, the phone charges as well. And it was, the first bill was bigger because it was installation and we had to buy some, uh, hardware and things like that, but, um, and that's when he said, yeah, if you could, we were working towards taking over all of the, the charges, so. Fingers crossed that it will go down.
Do you have caller ID now with this new system?
We do, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It still's not a great.
Not always though, actually. Like, if I get a cell phone call, sometimes it doesn't pop up on.
Yeah, and if it's like a transfer, if someone calls the front desk, they transfer it to my phone, it just says, circulation left. It's not that helpful. But anyway, that was, hopefully that will, will be, um, something to look forward to. And then, uh, as far as the passport, I did a webinar today. Uh, we've all been, we've been approved, everyone has gone through the training, which was a lot more substantial than I thought it was going to be. It's pretty, pretty detailed, and, um, we have a tentative start date of, uh, I think it was October sixteenth, I think now I'm gonna push it to the following week because I'm gonna be out of town. Um, now I'm the point person, so, um, but the webinar was really interesting. Some of the libraries that do it already said they bring in a lot of money. Sudbury said they brought in twenty-eight thousand dollars last year. Because you can charge, you can charge thirty-five dollars per, per application.
Processing?
For processing fee. And the only expense is the priority mail envelope to mail it. If they want any expedited features that you charge them for that, so it's very low cost, and I don't know how they must be doing.
A lot of.
A lot.
So could we do like a big event, like a international day or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Let people know that you do.
And the other thing was, they were saying in the, in the webinar was that they had a lot of, yeah.
Eight hundred a year.
Yeah, and they have, if you have, if you have six or seven agents, go, you know, doing it, then that's what they said, they have, they, you know, appointments all the time and.
And big families.
Yeah, they said it's, it's really popular, but anyway, I don't think we'll have anywhere near that, but they said, one of the interesting things was, they do get people that come in that say, I haven't been in the library since I was a teenager or something like that, so then they pivot that to, well, someone's. since I was a teenager, or something like that, so then they pivot that to, while someone's waiting, they'll give them, you know, maybe an application for a library card, or, you know, some materials, or, you know, have the kids have some reading materials for the kids, or something, or give them a newsletter, you know, so it's, it seems like it'll have two, two purposes, and, um.
It's amazing service, and how are we gonna, how are we gonna market that we do this?
So we, well, we haven't really gotten into a deep, you know, obviously, if it's something on the website, and that sort of thing, but.
Yeah, we'll do the newsletter. I think we wanna do a soft launch, because I think we were all, not overwhelmed, but maybe, as Bronwyn said, surprised about the detail. Um, so it, it goes down to, if you're doing this type of paperwork, and you've got this document for that paperwork, the staple goes here in this way.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's horizontal at the top.
And if it's this one, and you've got this, then the staple goes this way.
And which order the papers all go, and it's, it's.
And, and how you, and this is, you use a paper book for this, but you have to use a staple for that, and it's so weird.
Oh, it sounds like a mass health application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we'll get it here after, you know, we do it a few times, but it's, yeah, it's, it's a little bit challenging at first, so. But we're gonna have appointments.
So how do people know to make an, or how, can, do you have to call you, or is it gonna be on the website?
On the same way as you would reserve a room, or anything like that, so it'd just be another option. And we'll do half hour blocks.
Yep, you gotta have that button.
Oh, we need a passport button, we need a passport button, yeah.
So, uh, we're excited about it. I think it's gonna be really, uh, people will appreciate it. I think that'll be great.
That'd be great.
Great marketing goal, and so, uh, it's moving along.
So I'm sorry, just, just to kinda go back to the process that I just went through with my daughter, when she, when I got her passport last year. It was her first passport.
Yeah.
We had to bring in certain paperwork.
Yes.
And I got the information from, uh, the passport, whatever, website, like the, you, the customer, what was it called?
State Department.
State Department, State Department, State Department. So the State Department, full, has a search engine that tells you where your local place is, and we went to the post office in Sittitua, so with that.
So we're getting added to that, yeah, and they've asked us specifically what hours we're going to do it, you know, we can change it if it turns out.
So that's the.
You know, so, yeah.
Cause you go, you, that's what I went to, and I was like, I'm gonna go to the source, get the information and all the things I need to do. Had all the stuff bundled, and then I went to them.
So you'd be the perfect person to come in.
But you still, you still need to, to put it up, cause like, I wouldn't go there, because I know I can go to Hingham Post Office, and my, my passport's about to expire.
Yes.
So I can just go and do it, so you, you still want to let, you know, let people know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but yes, it will, that's another resource.
But you still need to know what documentation you need to bring with you.
Yeah, and then you put in your zip code, what's your closest one, and we would come up. And we, we, since we're open later than the post office, at least from what I understood today from the meeting, was that nights and weekend hours are super popular, because that's when, you know, you can't go to the Hingham Post Office.
Right.
So, um, we'll see, it's gonna be, it'll probably be some glitches, but I think we've grown, we've all have gone through the training, I think we'll, we'll.
We're gonna do it in teams at first, so we can check each other, and just.
Right, and make sure it's right.
Well, yeah, the one thing delay, some of that, and they said the biggest delay is people's photograph. Is it because, and, and they're saying today that people get them done at CBS or something, and they say it's fine, but it's, it's got shadows, or the person is smiling too much, or, yeah, there's so many little things that, that they will, that will disqualify it.
They feel like it's an overexposure.
Yeah, yeah.
Little thing, they'll kick it back.
That's the kind of thing, and, and I, the other thing I took away was that we are the only person that actually is going to see the person that's applying. So that's an, an extra level of responsibility, that we're sending all this in, saying that this person is.
Mm-hmm.
What their documents are, so, um, it's interesting, but, but I think it'll be great, um, especially once we get, um, a little bit more comfortable with it. Um, and what was the other thing? Oh, the welcome bags.
Welcome bags. Another, have another G and B, yeah.
Wow, I don't think I could take credit for that, but, uh, we're working on, and it's, it is a work in progress. We're going to, uh, put together, hopefully, with the cooperation from other departments, uh, sort of these, just, you know, welcome to the community tote bags. We've already kind of identified what we think we wanna get, and.
That's great.
Have in it, you know, sure, uh, you know, our newsletter, and card application, and that kind of thing, but also something from recreation, and, the town clerk gave us, um, registered to vote cards, and, you know, maybe something about how to use the, the transfer station.
Put in a blue bag.
Get a, yeah, put in a blue bag.
When I moved to Cohasset, my next door neighbor gave me two rolls of blue mats.
That's a great.
That was my welcome to Cohasset. My welcome to Cohasset.
I used to bring like buckets. More, more importantly than that, but yeah, like, you, you need to tell your dog, no, what do I get, you know, what is the sticker? Do I, you know, where do I even get that, you know, what is that good for, you know, that kind of thing, so. I spoke to Mary Quill at the assessor's office, and she gave me a list of all the new property purchases. She went back to the beginning of the year, which we gotta talk about.
Oh, that's interesting.
It might be a little too, yeah, so, and, and it's a lot of, it seemed like a long list. A lot of them are people creating LLCs, or some type of trust, too, because we think it's because of the millionaires tags that went into place, and they, they.
I think it's privacy.
It's the same, it, cause I'm like, these are my neighbors, I know they're still here, they, they just created a trust. So we would obviously give it to them.
We might by accident, we could just be an exception.
By accident, yeah. So, um, Megan's reached out to the different departments.
Might be nice, have like a list of the restaurants, or the.
Yeah, that's a good, we had originally thought about, you know, contacting the, um, like Chamber of Commerce, if people wanted to give a, like a Seabird gift card.
Yeah.
Or, or coupon.
We did reach out to.
And they don't, nobody wanted to.
Wouldn't know, maybe.
Oh.
I think that would be a great idea, but, you know, whatever.
But we're trying to also come, but we don't want just paper, so we're trying to think of some little sort of.
Chicklets are like, you know.
Something. Someone called me, a guy called me, said he'd been doing business with the library before, and they do, you know, like logo stuff.
Maybe calling them hard to get you seeds, like seed pockets or something.
That's a good idea, yeah.
I have a contact there.
Do you know?
Right, well, yeah, I think, I think we've opened it, any ideas, but, um, anyway, that's, we're, it's still in progress, but we're hoping to do it in the next month or so, or we gotta order the bags first.
Yeah, we gotta order the bags. We give, we gave the other departments deadlines, have some reminders and some more deadlines, so we'll see.
Well, I wonder if we could print out a, I mean, you, you could put the newsletter, and again, you're trying to get away from paper, but if you printed out like cardboard library cards, and like, bring this into the library, to your real library card.
Who's your pre-con, that's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
If the friends are designing a, um, bookmark that's on the nicer side, they'd like to put in there too, what they talked about.
We're hoping maybe like a free book from the book sale, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and stick the bookmark in it?
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah, or it's a coupon, they can trade it in for their.
Or a coupon, or you can come in and pick out your book.
Bring this when you go to Sandy Beach.
Yeah.
You know, some of the. So there's plenty of great things that we could highlight of the town.
And I think you can evolve, like evolve too, so it might start as one thing, and then, you know, in the next year or so, it might turn into something else. It also brings about two offices for rentals, the leasing offices around you. So if you're renting, you can also get your, your welcome bag, that's all.
I think you can get branded lollipops and stuff like that, like the Sandy Beach Association, or the library, you know, put a logo on a lollipop, or something like that, and send it a piece of, um.
I know you can do M and M's, that way.
I prefer M and M's.
No, I'm just thinking of.
But yeah, something more fun.
But that's a cute idea.
Yeah, so, that's, um, that's.
Yeah, M and M's printed with all the different services.
Hold that one. So would you like a motion to approve the bills?
I would.
I, I will make said motions to approve the bills.
Sending them around the sign.
Well, we have to approve them first.
I'm getting ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have already.
Motion passes.
Would you like to sign first? Thank you.
Do you have to run out on a second?
Chair's report.
Okay. Chair's report.
You're the chair tonight. No, that's Catherine, no, that's Catherine, that's Catherine, did she, did she, okay.
No.
Tell us something I should want to share.
No, just, it was just a Catherine.
So what's it make it?
So then the next thing. And then the, the CLT.
Report, and I can give that, and then, um, I don't know if anyone else is available to give the French report. Have the friend had it? Okay, so we can do that after. So CLT report, just a quick update. That, on the Pavilion Project, we were quiet over the summer. Um, everyone was traveling. It didn't really seem like the right time of year to be asking people for money, um, but we met again yesterday, and we're jumpstarting. And, um, uh, the plan is to get the thermometer out, um, in the next two weeks. We have a banner being made with the rendering, and coming soon with your help, um, to go, you know, eight foot long, to go next to it, like to get, make it feel real, and make it come alive. And we designed a postcard that's gonna get mailed to every household in town, um, with a please support. So hopefully, you know, the drive-by, you get the postcard, there's, there'll be an article on the stroll, and an article on the anchor. And, um, we'll, we'll try and do the, the broader brush, smaller dollar, um.
Do you actually suggest an amount for the general mailing?
But, um, it, it's a good thought, but no, it's just a please support.
Sure.
Kind of a general, you know, as you can, sort of thing. Um, it's just a postcard. Uh, we did, just today, received two incredible donations, one for $5,000 and one for 10.
Wow, oh my gosh.
So, yeah, uh, I, you know, it, it was, I, I, very nice day. It made me so happy.
Yeah.
Thanks to both.
Somebody that I asked in May, who sent me an email this morning, just wanted you to know, we hadn't forgotten.
Oh, nice, oh my gosh.
Someone I had lunch with who had no idea we were doing it, and she's like, oh, put me down for ten.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, okay. So, so that was lovely.
Thank you for inviting her to lunch.
Yeah.
I did pay for lunch. Which was planned anyway, because I was cultivating it for something else, but anyway, um. Then, uh, uh, the one other thing I, I've shared with everyone, I didn't have a chance to share it with you, was, um, oh, eh, eh, importantly, a couple things. One, um, uh, the town of Cohasset, um, will be required to have, or we will be required to have an owner's project manager to oversee the project because of the size it is, which, so, um, we dealt with one with the town hall project, and they basically interview all the contractors, they look at the bids, they, they like do all the detail building type stuff that, you know, I'm not qualified to know whether what's being presented is an apples-to-apples comparison, or whatever, I don't know the, the, um, the reputations of the, the different contractors out in the marketplace and everything else, so you have a project manager to help you with all this. And, um, we had a, a great relationship with the project manager, did, did the last town hall rendering, uh, and he's agreed to do this project, and the town of Cohasset is gonna cover it. We don't, we don't have to budget for that. So I talked to him yesterday, and apparently, um.
That's fantastic.
$300,000 is the, um, cutoff point for having to follow certain more onerous municipal rules, um, which include, you know, pre-qualifications and all this kind of stuff, so you can't have like the local mason do your work. And because the town has a relationship, a contract with, um, Yaria Brothers and another contractor, they can get them to do the site work under the terms of that contract, and that will be not included in the bidding thing that we have to go out with.
Keep it under.
So we could potentially end up being under $300,000, especially if we decide maybe that these concrete blocks, instead of having the brick facing on the amphitheater, I'll show you the picture after, um, cause that might be less expensive, but we can, you know, maybe have it priced out both ways, but that would give us a lot more flexibility, so that if you guys know local contractors, that we wanna make sure, hey, we're, you know, we're putting out a request for qualifications, make sure you submit something, um, you know, we can, we can try and get it, because one thing we found, we, we got feedback with the town hall project, that there were contractors like, you know, I'm, I'm in Southern New Hampshire, why the hell do I wanna come to Cohasset for a job? You know, it's, it's, you know, drive through Boston every day, and, and it's limited number of qualified people. So if you, if you're able to use local people who are, you know, you're gonna end up with a better situation. So, um, when I talked to John, he had not yet had the opportunity to read through the materials that he had gotten from the procurement manager, but, um, but I thought that was a really wonderful thing, and he's excited to do the project, and, um, he lives in Duxbury, and so it's like, easy. So, and this, well, and this, yeah, exactly, that is exactly what Michelle said, and this project is gonna happen. So, um, so I thought that was a great thing, so I shared that with you, that's it, that's my.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, awesome, that was awesome. And friends report.
Friends, um, so I presented a budget for the friends, so the end of their fiscal year is September 30th, and the beginning is October 1st, so they're working on, um, ending this fiscal year and starting a new one, flipping the books, and we're talking about, um, a new budget for this upcoming year. So they're gonna debate that, and talk some ones themselves, um, and then they will let me know next meeting. We pretty much leveled funded everything except for the children's department, where we asked for an additional 2,500. Um, so they did very, very well last year with their fundraising, they did some handwritten notes on top. Um, so they sent out their letter, and then Barbara Ren went through, and she looked at, um, looked for people who had donated previously that maybe hadn't donated in a few years, and they got together as a group, and they did some nice handwritten notes to those people, and that was, um, a great idea, and very lucrative. Um, so they did really well last year. So we're, we're looking forward to seeing what they do this year as well. Alex also joined our meeting to talk a little bit about.
Yes, I forgot about that.
Yeah, which was great. Um, I think he got them excited about, a little bit more excited about the letter that they do. Um, he's offered to draft a letter, which I realize is in my phone to look at, um, but, um, he offered to draft a letter for them, which was really exciting. I think, again, we're kind of in that place where we all know we need to market, but maybe we don't know what language to use, or, you know, what to say, and so it's great to have somebody like Alex, who's, who's happy to help, um.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so their next letter going out might be a little bit different, so that's exciting, so they're doing great.
I think the only thing, we probably just need to make sure that we're, they're not sending out the letter at the exact same time as the postcard, cause it's confusing as to why.
I agree.
Yeah.
We're timing that correctly, but.
The, I think the postcard, uh, the hope is the postcard will go out probably in a couple weeks.
Before, so that's good.
Yeah, I think they wanna do theirs like mid-October.
Yeah, so you're, you get time.
That's pretty close.
But it's still pretty close, but, yeah. It's, it'll be, I mean, it'll be fine, we'll figure that. They, they both have to go out, and they both have.
So, any other things we need to discuss?
Motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.